United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start with calling the roll, Ms. Burkmeyer.
Yeah.
Mr. Darrell.
Here.
Mr. Moses.
Oh yeah, Mr. Moses is, excuse. Till eight, he's gonna be joining us at eight o'clock.
Mr. Middlestat.
Wouldn't you start your video? Then I can rename you.
I'm gonna, he's called a couple of times, I'm assuming he's trying to get on, so we'll ask for him in a couple minutes.
Mr. Witt.
Here says Leonard.
Here.
Ms. Akavati, Huntershot.
I haven't heard from her. She's probably.
Burke Myers here, Mr. Green.
Here.
All right. Go into the open forum. Who do we have, Tim?
One second here. Alright, so there's, first one is Eve Birchfield.
Eve Birchfield.
So you can, I don't know if you can search for them.
John, Ms. Huntershot is here, she just messaged me on Zoom, she can't get herself to unmute.
Yeah, I can unmute her.
Alright, we'll have Tim unmute her right now.
Thank you, I'm here, I couldn't get it to unmute.
Alright. Now you're a co-host, so you can unmute yourself, I believe.
Correct.
So let's go back to Eve Birchfield. We just gotta find her to unmute her.
I don't see her in here. She's not. I'll see her on here.
Maybe move on, John, then circle back to her at the end, maybe she's not on or having some.
The next one is Catherine Cruz.
She was there.
You can't just search and go right to it.
Yeah, it's not, it's her name unless she logged in with a different name.
Who's the next one, Tim?
Hi, Michael Spol.
What's that?
Michael.
Michael Spol.
May I can search for the first name too? There's a Michael. I don't know if it's the same one.
This is working out great.
I think the issue is somehow everybody is unable to unmute themselves.
Yeah, that's correct. And it's, we have almost 300 people on, and she goes to search through to see where they're at.
Can we just try unmuting everyone for the sake of time?
I can try.
Can you hear me? This is Carla Hegeman, just wondering if you can hear me, I'm hoping to unmute.
Yeah, we can hear you, so were you one of the speakers on that list?
I am one of the speakers.
Well, we're gonna start with you.
Okay, sounds great, I'm doing this from my phone, so I hope I don't lose you. So hold on. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Okay. I am deeply concerned about the actions being recommended by the administration regarding the employment of Colleen Mellon. I don't know if these recommendations are coming through for this meeting or a meeting in the future. However, my concerns remain the same. Colleen is a highly respected and valued member of the Anchor Bay community. Most families in our community have had extremely positive interactions with Colleen in her role as the director of the Aquatic Center. My deep concern and impression is that these actions are of a personal nature, and I find this self-exercising. Many in our community, including myself, viewed the last school board as partial, supporting little vendettas by administrative members. Please do the right thing in the case of Colleen Mellon. Review all the information, check 20 years worth of her performance reviews. Reassure the community that this board, on which each of you committed to represent your community, will not rubber stand this action. Show us that your board represents fairness. Please demonstrate this fairness by treating Colleen Mellon with respect she has earned through her years of excellent service to this community. Can I have a? Jeff, can you go around and give me garbage bags?
Thank you, Carla.
Okay. She has got skate gloves, you wanna give me, I'm about to go clean up the garbage can? No, I don't.
Catherine Greenberg.
Catherine Greenberg.
I am also here to support Colleen Mellon that you should relook at what you are accusing her of.
Okay, thank you. Dennis Richards.
Yeah, there goes, he should be unmuted.
Hey, how you doing, thank you for your time. I asked parents that could not attend the meeting tonight to send me any questions that they would like me to read. One thing that is evident is that parents and students still have a lot of unanswered questions on the return to school roadmap. I'm gonna read these to you. I'm a parent of a seventh grader, could you ask the school board about the backpack safety? If kids will be required to carry their backpack, how are they going to make sure that they bring safe bags to school? Are they checking the bags? Also, where will the bags be placed in the classroom? On the floor is not the best option, as studies have found that this virus can be transmitted by shoes. Students enrolled in honors academies still receive the status while enrolled in virtual. How much time does the district anticipate teachers providing weekly live or instruction in virtual academy? School is not an option for my student, as his health condition is an autoimmune disorder. Really just want to know how much time he's going to get with a teacher. I would like to know, if a student chooses a virtual academy, will they actually see live teachers teaching on camera? It needs completely structured throughout the day with real teachers with attendance accountability. Anchor Bay Middle School North, I don't know if I can get to the meeting on time, so per your post, please ask some questions for me. My child is on a 404, 504 program, and it seems we are being rushed to make decisions on if he will be in person. We are leaning towards online because both him and I have respiratory issues. My question that I would like asked is, are there plans for 504 students like my child? And Mr. Woodside's email states the online courses would be rigorous. I emailed him directly and never heard back. How will that work for 504 students? He benefits from in-school instructions, of course, but I don't know if we can make that chance, and so what? Now his grades will suffer? Online, at the end of the school year, last year didn't go well for him either. Also, my question is, if someone tests positive in the class or gets sick in school, how will that work? Will they be kept in some, will they be, will they be kept separated until someone can pick them up? I'd like to know more about the online learning. With the school, will the school be able to see how many kids are logged in? They should, is it virtual or just Schoology and Zoom meetings? If a child attends in-person school and tests positive, is it quarantined? Will this be an absence, or will they need to be complete a semester online? What, I'm afraid of what they're gonna eliminate. I would like to know, is it considered not to two semesters virtual? Until the state has close to zero cases or not? What is the responsibility? I do not feel like the schools or should have to carry the burden, extra work, extra responsibility, carry the anxiety, or be considered frontline workers for our children. We're asking them to do so much to be responsible for our babies, it's not fair to them. I stand with the teachers and their decisions. They are not superheroes, but not superhuman, and we can't expect them to be. What happens if a student tests positive? Does the entire class slash teachers in contact quarantine? Will that count against allocated absences? Are students allowed to bring lunch? Are students allowed to bring lunch bags, or will that be allowed to prevent germs? I would like to know if it's gonna be a sack at all, big decision maker for us. I would love for you to get more information on the online virtual academy, if it will be live streaming from the classroom, so that the students at home can follow along and interact like Richmond schools. I really want my daughter to be in core this year. I'd like to know if it's possible to do virtual or online classes and include core. I'd also like to know what platform online schooling will be besides Schoology. If your child is doing virtual learning, and there's a scheduled live meeting or lesson, your child will be missing it because of a doctor's appointment. Are they still able to view the learning session? Will they be marked down for missing, or are the teacher's sessions also gonna be pre-recorded live or both? I only have a couple more.
Yeah, I was gonna say, close there, Mr. Richards, we got, a lot of this stuff's gonna be covered tonight as well, so.
Yeah, I just, I just have two more. I was wondering about if they go to school and have a cold or fever, what is the protocol? Will they be required to get tested for COVID and be required to quarantine? Will there be any high school sports during? Will there be any sports in the high school level if the school district goes 100% virtual? How will you ensure social distancing, social distancing in high school and middle school besides having the hallway taped into two lanes? My point is that there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I'm looking forward to hearing just what you have to say tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Go to. Is it Liz Dobie?
Mute your phone if you're not talking, please.
I don't see Liz on here either.
Janet Kobyak.
Hi, I think most of my questions were addressed previously, so just waiting on those answers.
Alright, thank you, Brianna Holmes.
Nope. No, there's no Brianna.
Emily Westfall.
Emily's here. Give her a second.
Hi, I'm also just here as an advocate for the district. She's done so much for the community, and I know a lot of people have really great things to say about her, including myself, so that's just why I'm here.
Thank you. Jennifer, what?
Bucay, B-U-C-A-T. I don't see others, Jennifer B., I guess, I'm assuming this is her.
Um, yeah, my questions were already addressed also, so just waiting for the answers on them.
I don't think, one of my questions was addressed about temperature checks at the entrances of the schools. And if the students would be, if the students that are quarantined at home, if they test positive for COVID-19, if they're gonna continue, if they're gonna switch to online schooling for those two weeks where they're in quarantine.
But it looks like then, thank you.
A lot of people in this meeting right now.
Eve never entered, and then Krantin Kraus.
We'll move on to. General business, we'll start with personnel. For new hire with Ms. Gonzalez.
Good evening. So tonight, I bring before you a candidate to fill the vacancy left by Charlene Pizzamonte for a food service supervisor. We're bringing to you Janelle Carey, is what she goes by, Youngblood, she's coming to us from South Lake, she's their current food service director. And we ask to approve her hire this evening.
Alright. Any just, I guess first, is there a? Any comments from the board?
Mm-hmm.
Don't blame me, I didn't do it.
Alright. Nobody's raising their hand. So is there a motion to approve Janelle Youngblood as the new food service supervisor?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Hattershot, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. DeWitt. Any discussion? Seeing done, we'll vote by roll, Ms. Burkmeyer.
Before we vote, is Mr. Moses on? I see his name, but maybe it was already there.
Yes, I'm on, Lisa. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we see Steve Middlestat on here?
No.
Okay, you want me to go ahead? Alright, Mr. Drew.
Yes.
Ms. Huntershot?
Yes.
Ms. DeWitt?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Burke Meyer, yes. Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, alright. That would like to, that like to speak, so.
Shannon.
Shannon. He's gonna unmute you right now.
Yes, hello, thank you for your time. I just wanted to say, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so many of my questions, of course, were answered or asked by Richard. And I just wanted to, I'm hopeful that the board will address the PPE for students and staff. Again, when symptoms occur, all the what-ifs, like what if they're getting on a bus? What if they're walking into the building? What if they're walking into a classroom? What happens when students in the hallways are not wearing their masks? Like, all the what-ifs that could happen. As far as safety in the buildings, I'd like, are teachers on board? Are teachers going to be required to enforce this? And how do they do that? 40% safe at Anchor Bay, and I know you all have a hard decision to make, this is not an easy time, this is not an easy place you are in. So I appreciate everything you're doing. As far as the virtual accommodations, I encourage you to look at what other districts are doing, there's some good things out there, there's some really good virtual academies happening. And not to say that Anchor Bay is not doing their due diligence with this, but we just haven't seen any of the major details. So I'm excited to see what you have to offer for our district today. And that's basically it, I'm just encouraging you to keep in mind the safety of all the students, all the staff, bus drivers, custodians, secretaries, everybody involved in this school startup. And that's it, thank you so much for your time, and God bless.
Alright, thank you. We'll move to the school bond loan fund. I believe this is Mr. Redman.
Thank you, President Drew, good evening, board. The resolution before you this evening is a resolution to borrow an approximate amount of $26 million. The school district will need that amount of money to meet its obligations, both this spring, both this coming spring and this fall, to meet our debt obligations to bondholders for previous debt issuances that the district has had over the previous years. This is a resolution that we, has come before the board for the last six, seven years at least. And so I think you're probably pretty familiar with what we're asking tonight. This will allow us to keep our debt levy at 10 mils, and we'll not have to increase that on our local taxpayers, so that's great news. And if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
Alright, heard of this real quick, I just want, Lisa, if you could mark down, or Ms. Burkmeyer, mark down that Mr. Middlestat is here now?
Okay.
And so on the school bond loan fund, is there any discussion from the board? Seeing done, is there a motion to approve the resolution as stated, as presented?
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Motion by Mr. Moses, supported by Ms. Hattershot. Vote by roll.
Mr. Middlestat?
Yes.
Mr. Darrell?
Yes.
Ms. Akavati, Huntershot?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Burke Meyer, yes. And Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Go into the return to school. They're gonna vote through this presentation. Are you sure? You hear me now? What do you hear, Mr. Woodside? So.
He's muted.
Can't hear him, Mr. Drew.
God. Why, I usually don't have any difficulty people here, can you hear me? Hey, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
So, what I was saying is, the roadmap that the board has before them is a draft, and that is the map. The roadmap is what the governor had put out for all districts in the state to work with. All the districts of Macomb County have been working together, you know, on this roadmap, so you'll see a lot of similarities, you know, in between the districts. But I want to stress the fact that it's a draft. Well, this is here to get input from the board in going through this. And then before August 15th, the board has to reconvene to approve the final plan. And in that, we are looking, you know, we are working towards, you know, the virtual, face-to-face. There's been discussions about a, you know, different types of hybrids, how we would do it every other day. So, you know, this is a, you know, with the executive orders the governor puts out, it could change as we go forward. So with the information we have at this time, that's what we're gonna go over on the roadmap. I know, I believe we're starting with Joe McDonald. Do we, can we put the presentation up to where the roadmap?
Alright, can every, can you hear me? Lisa, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Alright, good evening, board. As Leonard talked about, it's my pleasure to present this draft of the Anchor Bay roadmap, or return to school roadmap. We can go ahead to the next slide. As Leonard discussed, this roadmap is required with the Governor Whitmer's Michigan Safe Schools Return to School Roadmap, and in conjunction with her Safe Start Plan. And what we as a county then have the obligation to work together and create a roadmap, depending on what the current phase that our region is in. Currently, in Macomb County, we are in stage four. So these are, these are the three documents that we kind of work, work out of, understanding the phases, understanding the roadmap, and understanding what we need to put together as a local district. Next slide, please. In the roadmap, it also talks about governance, and talks about how that we have to work together with different.
Meeting, and my hope is that many of the questions will be answered as I go through the next few slides. One of the questions that came up was.
Sorry, I'm hearing all kinds of feedback, are you hearing that as well?
You are apparent, and you're choosing the.
I emailed the guy.
And you're hyped for the academy, what we would be doing.
Now you should be able to. Go back, so Joe, can you unmute yourself?
I'm trying, okay, thank you. I apologize for that. It was out of my control. As I was describing, with the roadmap put to, put out by the governor, in that roadmap, it spells out, gives us some guidelines that we are to take input from stakeholders. So in Anchor Bay, we put together a virtual or remote learning committee. This committee has met seven or eight times, there's a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. This committee involves administrators, teachers from. This committee involves administrators, teachers from all levels and from all subject areas, including special ed and electives and specials and et cetera. We have a safety committee. A, that committee also has staff members from different groups. Our operations committee works hand in hand with the safety committee and also our curriculum council committee that's been involved in our professional development planning. In addition to those task force with our staff and community, we have done some surveys. We did a parent survey, a staff survey, and some obviously staff participation with our task force. We've discussed doing additional surveys as needed. But the idea is that it's clear in the roadmap that communication with the community and stakeholders is a must. So next slide. So tonight, we have some, a couple of simple goals for a very complex issue. And that is, you know, looking at this draft of Anchor Bay's Return to School Roadmap to ask some questions, seek clarification, make sure that we have a group understanding of decisions and discuss our next steps and things that we will do moving forward. Next slide. And as we get to the next slide, what it's gonna talk about is developing our final, our final plan. So what we are doing, as Leonard talked about, is we're, we're working with the Macomb County in developing a countywide plan, which all of the, the different, yep, here we go, thank you. All the different groups have worked together, including our superintendents, our curriculum directors, principals, the executive office and so on. So you could skip to the next slide. So that plan, the idea of the plan is that it's gonna, it's gonna outline accountability for how we're gonna re-educate depending on the phase that we're in. So as I talked about, it's been a collaborative effort. I think that is the key to this slide, that we worked, we worked together and continue to work together where we, Terry and I will get on with the county curriculum directors. Superintendent Woodside is, is often on with the local superintendents. I know principals and so on are on, on a regular basis, as well as our support groups for special ed and other social, emotional groups with our, with our social workers and so on. So if the, the plan is broken down into stages and what we're looking for tonight, and not necessarily tonight, but, but the, the board's role in this is the, the plan put forth by the governor calls for a three-pronged approval approach. And that would be, at the end, it has to be signed by the superintendent. It has to be signed by our school board president. And then after that, it gets approved by the county superintendent, Mike DeBolt, who is also working hand in hand with our superintendents on a regular basis. We have to make sure that the special education and other assurances are all followed and it needs to be signed off. So we're gonna get into a little bit of our specific plan and just try to move my. There we go. And as I talked about, this planning, the key to all this and every group task force and everything, every time that we talk, we gotta understand about flexibility. We gotta understand that as we make a plan, there's things out of our control that could change the plans. And we're focusing on knowing that we have to work diligently on strengthening and making our, our remote learning more robust and be prepared to, to be moving towards face-to-face instruction, to look into remote instruction and also have a combination, hybrid, if you will, of, of both, knowing that we could start and make one plan. And again, the virus, which is out of our control, could change our plans in a hurry. So we're gonna also know that we have to monitor any of the executive orders. They often can change your plans. And also work closely with the Macomb County Health Department and follow all their recommendations. Next slide. So what we've been doing is we've been spending a lot of time working on, you know, the first option, which is moving towards in-person instruction. And, and obviously, as we heard in the questions that were asked in the open forum and, and all the, the questions that have come in during this planning period, that, you know, and always, safety is our number one concern. So as we go through the, the roadmap and as we look at the currently being in phase four, we're, we're looking at all the ways in which we can mitigate risks, follow the recommendations put forth in the plan and look at some of the highlights here. I know some of the questions were in, you know, with the plan, it's clear that school staff and students in grade six through 12 have to wear masks. And all students have to wear them on buses, in the hallways and in common areas. We're also looking at the virtual option. You know, for one, for people who choose or feel like the in-person scenario is not at the best interest for their student and/or if we all move to a remote setting where we're back online. But what we're looking at is, is strengthening both of these and developing these, these two options, knowing that if we combine the two, we could account for a hybrid model that, that we have been looking into. In the online option, there's some things that have been really clear with feedback that we got last spring and that we are gaining from the virtual learning committees is, and following from the recommendations, is that, that it becomes a, a group effort where students will need learning coaches. And that is making sure that someone at home, that's making sure that they're, they're following through on what they need to do. They, we, we're gonna expect that students are fully engaged in their virtual classes, knowing that with virtual, it will be a combination of some live meetings and some asynchronous or recorded. And there's concern about academic integrity, you know, making sure that the work being done is, is of that child. And also, I'm not gonna read every bullet, but just knowing that it would be a full mirror of the in-class work and that assignments will, will be the same. They'll be, they'll be graded and count fully towards GPA and class rank. So I know that that was some of the questions and concerns that consistently come up. We have the next slide. So in particular, the Anchor Bay Virtual Learning Academy, we're asking for registration over the next week. Some of the questions that come up and that we fully understand that, you know, this is just being explained this evening and there'll be many questions. You know, I, I know that we've received over 100 questions, people emailing in with questions. So we're asking for a timeframe, but we also realize that this is a, a fluid situation. Someone's individual circumstances can change after the 13th. And we know that we need to work with families to, to deal with individual extenuating circumstances. So, but getting a, getting a, an idea of where we stand, it will help us and assist us in the how, how we would schedule it and, and what teachers we need to involve in, in remote learning and also face-to-face learning. As we discussed this, you know, there are other platforms where you can use a third-party vendor. We feel strongly that the courses should be taught by Anchor Bay teachers. We think that our teachers are, is what separates us from, from the pack. And we wanna make sure that they have, that they're leading the instruction and not just, you know, mentoring and assisting, that they're actually leading it. The content and curriculum will mirror the in-person option. And what we're really doing is taking where we left off last year with Schoology. We built a lot more Schoology trainings over the summer. And the platform will be, the learning management platform will be Schoology. It is supported throughout the county. And our teachers have been, you know, beginning to be trained in it last year. And we're looking to build on that. Student grading, again, like I said, will be, will be the same. What we'll do is take the course catalogs, basically, and mirror through Schoology. So a teacher's gonna use Schoology whether they're face-to-face or in a virtual setting. And that way, if we all get pushed to a virtual setting, it will be a seamless transition. But some other, some other things that will occur in the, in the virtual academy is that you'll, they'll have work each day for each course. Right now, we're trying to, to offer everything as, as students have already selected. When we see the registration, if we, if we have any anomalies that we may have to address with the administrators and teachers, we'll, we'll do that. But that's our goal, is to keep it as accommodating as possible. It's always been a goal of Anchor Bay's to give students their choice and let them drive the schedule. The participation, like I said, is through Schoology. And there's, you know, it's systems in place to homework assignments and tests that will be, you know, graded the same as if they were given face-to-face. On the next slide, Terry is gonna talk about some more of the ideas that we have in some of the, the face-to-face settings. So Terry, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about what it looks like for students during the school day in-person learning. And due to the state of Michigan requirements, every student and staff member must wear a face mask when entering the buildings, unless a medical exemption is provided. The individual is, maybe if the individual's under two years old or is unable to remove their mask, their own mask, medical documentation for a mask exemption is required. And each school administration will share the, the arrival and dismissal process for their buildings as the school year approaches. So we all know that masks are important and beneficial to the safety and, and the health of all others. As far as personal items, students are encouraged from, discouraged from sharing their personal items. We do not want them sharing, especially water bottles. They need to bring their own so that there's not cross-contamination. And elementary students will be encouraged to use a lanyard to clip their mask on so that they, it doesn't fall on the floor or they don't lose it. So that would be encouraged. Class transitions, classrooms will be set up by the district to allow the maximum distance between students with all their desks and tables. And they're all gonna be facing in the same direction whenever possible. In the elementary schools, we are gonna have students remain in the classrooms throughout the day as much as possible, so there's less transition. Masks are recommended, but not required in the classrooms. Students will social distance inside the classroom as much as possible. Students will be required to wear face masks in common areas such as hallways. And students will wash their hands and sanitize multiple times per day. At the secondary level, students will be required to wear face masks in classrooms and common areas. Schedules will be designed to, for, to minimize exposures. And we also wanna make sure that students will be asked to hand wash, sanitize many times throughout the day between periods also, just like we do with the, with the elementary. Next slide. So in the hallways, each hallway will be marked with a lane divider similar to streets with opposite, opposite arrows indicating the desired directions that students will be asked to go, just to avoid all the congregating in the hallways. Restrooms will be marked by signage noting the capacity to provide sufficient social distancing. At the elementary level, will be monitored by the classroom, of course. The classroom teacher will decide when kids go in and out of the classrooms, just as they had before. Secondary students will be discouraged to carry backpacks and avoid locker use to keep the traffic flow and mitigate, mitigate congregation in the hallway. The elementary lockers will, will not be shared, so that won't be an issue. Students will not be permitted to congregate in the hallways at all. As far as the music, PE, media and art at the elementary levels, we're gonna make every effort to be, these, to bring these into the classroom so that students aren't traveling within the hallways. We're gonna bring the teachers into the classrooms. If classes are held outdoors, students may remove their face masks while observing social distancing of six feet. Lunches, elementary students will eat in their classrooms. Like we said, we're gonna try to keep them in the classroom as much as possible, just to avoid all the transitions in the hallways. So they're gonna be eating in the classrooms or in other areas where social distancing can occur. And secondary students will, will maintain the traditional rotating lunch schedules and will eat in common areas. We're, we're bringing in extra tables to those secondary buildings to make sure that we can social distance students more and to separate. Masks will not be required at the secondary level during eating and drinking, of course. And as a result, social distancing will be enforced during the lunch periods. So additional spaces will be utilized as much as possible. So branches off of lunch rooms, we're gonna look at that so we can, we can move students so they can separate farther and, and we can get more students together as much as possible. So recess, face masks are not required outdoors if six feet of distances are maintained. We need to put schedules together for the students that are going outside for recess just so we don't have multiple classes out at the same time. Equipment will be limited to appropriate number of students. Classes will be kept together, like I said, outdoors. And students must wash their hands before and after using the playground equipment. And we're going to make sure that disinfectant is used on any of the equipment used outside. Next is visitors into the buildings. Visitors to the facilities will be restricted to essential personnel unless there's a reason for their attendance. If they're picking up a sick child or an emergency, of course, we're going to let them in. All students, all visitors must complete a self-screening questionnaire prior to entering the building and just as we do with our staff. Visitors who are permitted and permitted entry must wear a face mask and remain in the designated area pertaining to the reason for the visit. So each school and facility will have a drop-off space for students, items arriving after the school day, in case somebody forgot to bring something and parents dropped them off. So this is, this screen is talking about the positive test procedure protocols. We're going to follow the guidelines set forth by the Macomb County Health Department. Any student or staff who exhibits COVID-19 symptoms or has a temperature of 104 degrees Fahrenheit or higher while at school or any school activity should be sent home. A student will be required to wear a face covering and wait in an isolation area until they can be removed from the school. Isolation areas are at each building. And we're gonna try to get as many more as we can, just to have them available. And so those, those areas will be, will be available for students that are showing symptoms. The timeline for returning is, the timeline for returning is dictated. um, the timeline for returning is dead dictated by the Macomb County Health Department guidelines and the CDC recommendations. Students with a positive test should inform the Anchor Bay administration at the student-specific building. Students that are exposed will be notified per the Macomb County Health Department guidelines. So just to, just to piggyback on that, we want to make sure that, um, students have symptoms, um, but not, not close contact or exposure. They are sent home and then asked for 24 hours of, of, um, rest and make sure that they're not symptoms. So that's when there's, they're not, they're not close to anybody or had contact directly. That's just showing symptoms. And then some students that have symptoms, but they were in close contact, they're sent home and they're asked to see the doctor and get tested. And then close contact to a confirmed case, they're sent home and quarantined for 14 days. And again, then we would refer back to the Macomb County Health Department guidelines and talk to them about what the next steps would be for the classroom. The next slides are going to be digging into the roadmap sections. So the first section is safety, and that's Sherri Kenward's going to be presenting on that.
Thank you, Mr. Wedge. Good evening, Board of Education. Mrs. Berkmeier, can you hear me?
Again.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I plan on highlighting the safety requirements for Phase Four. As previously mentioned, with personal protection equipment, all staff and students in grades six through 12th are required to wear face masks except at meals or lunchtime. Students that are in kindergarten through fifth grade do not need to wear their mask in the classrooms, only in the common areas. Anchor Bay will continue to provide supplies to support healthy hygiene behaviors. Hand sanitizers will be available in all classrooms and lunchrooms. We will continue to teach and reinforce proper handwashing practices. We will continue to have plenty of signage posted throughout all buildings as constant reminders to students and also to staff. When we review spacing and movement in buildings, teachers and students will be spaced as far apart as possible. We will set up classrooms to provide maximum social distancing. Classrooms will be set up to accommodate most tables, desks and traditional roles facing one another with every effort to create as much distance between desks as possible. Signage will be posted in every building to remind students and staff to social distance. Staff will be required to complete a daily self-examination form, which is available online, where they will also take their temperature before coming to work every day. The roadmap states that families are encouraged to check their child's temperature at home every morning. Students with a temperature of 100.4 or greater should stay home. There will not be any indoor assemblies during Phase Four with more than one class. And also off-site field trips will be suspended. When talking with athletics, Anchor Bay will comply with the MHSAA. And I know Mr. Battle will update the building leaders, the coaches, parents and players as needed as things change. The question will be asked, what will the building, what will the cleaning procedures be for schools? All schools will be disinfected daily. Staff will continue to clean and sanitize high-touch areas and items throughout the school day and in the evenings. Just as some review with transportation, staff and students will be required to wear a mask on the bus. Students will use hand sanitizers upon entering the bus. And all of our buses will be disinfected in between and at the end of each run. Next slide. And at this time, Mr. Kuzmata will be talking about mental and social emotional health.
Okay, uh, thank you. I believe I was just unmuted. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So, um, for in-person versus virtual learning, I think we generally have an understanding of what we can offer. We have brick and mortar instruction, what our staff are able to do. Um, but for remote learning purposes, we wanted to just kind of delve into what this might look like. Um, physical health screenings are clearly possible in the classroom. Um, but once we do get into more virtual setting, how can we have more of a, a mental health screening? Our goal will be to instruct staff on how to monitor student well-being and to be able to identify and refer at-risk students so that we can get them immediate support. Counselors, social workers and psychologists, those are going to be our, our mental health, uh, members that will provide that ongoing support. Um, they can provide check-ins, uh, and then of course, crisis management um, if situations elevate to that level. Um, staff training and professional development will be of the utmost importance to make sure that everyone is aware of the protocol, that staff have the skills, the tools and the resources to implement these kinds of supports. Uh, and we intend to, of course, offer that, especially, uh, starting at the beginning of the year. We're going to have mindfulness training. Uh, we will have some, uh, community mental health organizations join us to provide us with their input, uh, just to make sure that we are well-aware of these, uh, social and emotional needs that, uh, our children will be facing during these times. Um, our district at the elementary and secondary level, we have comprehension, uh, comprehensive crisis management plans, um, that will not change. Uh, that's already written down, so we will make sure that staff have a kind of a general awareness of that or that they can at least have an outreach to staff who do. Um, ongoing communication with students is going to be critical during this time. Um, phone calls, emails, virtual meetings, you know, sessions with Zoom and, you know, Office 365 will be critical. Um, just ensuring that parents and students do not feel as if they're off on an island. Um, and we want to make sure we're eliciting regular feedback, uh, and that all voices are heard so we can provide support as needed. Um, and then of course, providing resources for staff. Uh, obviously, we, we take precedent for the students. We want to make sure that our staff feel cared for, that, you know, they get the, uh, appropriate resiliency strategy and, uh, trainings that they need. Go on to the next slide, please. Um, we will leverage the state and the county for as many resources as we can. Uh, I have a variety of, um, supports, uh, that I didn't include in the slides just because there were too many and I thought it would take up too much time. But our mental health staff will have access to a variety of resources from food banks, housing support, outside counseling supports and centers, teletherapies, crisis lines. Um, we will compile and update these lists regularly and make sure that as families, students or even staff require them, we will have them ready. Um, we will offer parents guidance as needed. Um, we could even proactively offer guidance in de-stigmatization of COVID-19, um, discussions about what is normal behavior in a response to crisis or during times like these. Uh, best practices, talking through, uh, children through trauma, uh, and even positive self-care strategies that promote health and wellness. So, um, I just wanted to assure everyone that, uh, our district is certainly not forgetting about this very important facet of, of education.
Okay, thank you. I, I was just getting unmuted there. Um, want to talk real quick, um, throughout the roadmap, um, and that the board you have in front of you, um, you have the entire roadmap, some of it. Again, the instruction, uh, is broken down into a, um, a few different categories. Again, like I talked about on pages 31, 32, it will talk about the governance. And that is again, the collaboration, uh, getting input, um, from stakeholders, working with the ISD, superintendents, uh, staff, uh, parents, et cetera. Um, it goes on to talk about, um, the remote learning and making sure in, if we're in Phase Three, if somehow we move in that direction, um, that we, uh, make sure that we start with, um, forward of assessments, making sure that we understand, uh, where our, our students are, uh, knowing that there was an impact, um, with our shutdown last year. Um, it clarifies, uh, and we are aware that we have to review IEPs and make sure they're implemented, uh, and communicated to the teaching staff. Um, Frank and his staff throughout the spring did a night outstanding job, uh, conducting Zoom, uh, IEPs. Uh, and we're diligent with that schedule, so, um, he has, uh, got a plan in place for that. Um, it calls for teacher collaboration, uh, and working on the online platforms. Um, we were, um, very successful with the continuing our, our, uh, professional learning committees with our staff. Uh, staff, um, were, uh, very engaged, um, on a regular basis with their professional learning, uh, groups. Uh, we have to make sure that we continue to support our students, uh, in their post-secondary efforts, uh, whether that's college or getting to a trade school or, uh, any other supports that they need, uh, after high school. And again, um, it's clear that, um, we have to monitor progress of students that are online. So, um, it has to be regular, uh, with mentor teachers, with, um, um, different tiers of, uh, support. And we plan on including our academic coaches, uh, to help those that, um, are not being successful if we're in the remote learning setting. Um, it ensures that we have to, uh, maintain and stay updated with any changes from the Michigan Department of Ed, so they know that they've put together a plan and, uh, they've made it clear that it, it could change and we have to, um, keep up with those changes. It also, um, calls for the support of our physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech theory, therapy, um, or any of the ancillary services that we provide, uh, has to continue uh, to the best of our ability as, uh, we, if we're in the, again, in a remote setting. Um, we need, Terry is going to, um, continue and talk a little bit about, uh, the next slides. So we could unmute Terry. Thank you.
Thank you. The next section under instruction is communication and family supports. And we really needed to, part of the, part of the roadmap is talking about, um, sharing the expectations and getting feedback from the community and the families. And we have done that with, um, surveying parents and getting the feedback when they call and talk about, you know, how it went during the quarantine time, what we can learn from that. And then also the surveys and the communications that we're going to have out in the future. We're going to have trainings for, for all the families to understand the school's instructional digital system, Schoology, and we're going to have trainings coming up within the next week or two available for them to, to learn about the platform itself, how it works, how to communicate, what the, what the structure looks like and how students, what the expectations of students are when using Schoology. So that's to come within the next couple of weeks. And professional learning for our own staff, we're going to make sure we're continuing that learning and training for, the focuses will be on equality and social emotional learning. So we know that, um, social emotional is an issue that we're dealing with, with students, um, not being able to see their, their peers, but also for staff, for it's the social emotional piece. This is a difficult time for everyone, so we want to make sure that we have those supports in place. We already have some things in the works for professional development for September 1st and 2nd. So we also want to provide that time for sharing knowledge with each other. That's practices and remote learning supports. And that's done through the professional learning committees and communities that we have within the buildings, within grade levels, within the topic areas and subjects. We want to make sure that we're monitoring all the students and assessing student work in all of the modes, whether it be face-to-face or remote. We need to make sure that we're keeping up on students and that they are doing the work and that we're giving them feedback. Instruction, we're always working on continuing the curriculum alignment. Um, we talked previously about IEPs. We have to make sure that we're reviewing those at the beginning of the school year. And not just IEPs, but 504s included. So we're going to make sure that we're doing that for all the students and holding those IEPs virtually if possible. And we have to look at the connectivity access to, for all the students and staff, making sure that if we go remote for everyone, that we have the devices and the supports in place for them. We need to make sure that we're taking attendance for students and that is part of, just as if they were coming to school daily. You know, we need to ma- ma- monitor and make sure that students are, are being supported and making sure that they're, they're, um, participating. And teachers will assess and give, um, students feedback on their student work. So we're going to make sure that we're on that and making those connections. Next, we're going to hear from Mr. Case on operations.
Thank you, Terry. Uh, can, uh, do you hear me okay?
Yep.
Uh, operations, we're talking about facilities, uh, touched on a few of these issues already. We're going to clean and disinfect schools following protocols established by the CDC school decision tree. And what does that mean? It means, uh, how are we going to clean our buildings? What procedures will we follow? Well, our schools are going to be disinfected on a daily basis. We will limit access to our instructional areas after hours to enable our staff to fully sanitize each area. This also means that facility use of school district buildings by outside organizations will not be allowed. Staff during the day will be continuously cleaning and sanitizing high-touch areas and equipment throughout the school day in all of our buildings. A question we've gotten already is, uh, what disinfectants do we use? Uh, we use products made by, uh, from a company called Betco. Uh, the two products we primarily use, one is called PH7Q and the other is Simplicity Sanabed Multi-Range. These disinfectants are listed on the EPA's List N, which are disinfect, which are disinfectants recommended for the use against the virus that causes COVID-19. Next slide, please.
Did the slide switch or no?
Yes, next slide, please.
I know, but did it switch?
No.
Because it shows it switched on mine. I'm afraid if I keep going, it's going to fly ahead.
There it is. Um, budget, food service and staffing. Uh, we'll provide guidance to all of our staff and our administrators on the use of the CARES Act funding to make key purchases. As we discussed previously in regard to food service, lunches at the elementary level will take place within the classroom as much as possible. Secondary students will utilize the cafeteria and other large group areas to provide additional spacing. As mentioned previously, we'll bring in additional tables and, uh, set up student stations so that we can space our students as far apart as possible. We'll also redeploy underutilized staff, ask them to assist us with cleaning and disinfecting and other operational activities. Could be a situation where we have a para-pro who, um, wants to work some additional hours. We'll provide them with the proper training and the proper PPE and we'll ask them to assist us with some of these other disinfecting and cleaning operational duties. We also need to monitor and schedule those hours to maybe be mindful of our budget to make sure we're staffing according to our, uh, guidance with our, um, keeping within our budget as well as making sure we don't bend, uh, in these areas. Next slide, please. Uh, we touched on it previously in terms of busing. Uh, obviously, busing will take place. Students will be required to wear a face mask and we will use hand sanitizer upon entering the bus so that students, uh, can sanitize their hands. Uh, buses will be disinfected in between runs and at the end of each run each day. Um, symptomatic students cannot ride the bus. Should a student become ill during the school day, uh, we will have a plan. The administrator, the principal in that building will have a plan for contacting the parents and making sure that student gets home safely. Uh, weather permitting, we'll keep the windows Weather permitting, we'll keep the windows open when cleaning and in between trips in order to better air out the buses and make them, once the disinfection process is complete. The next slide is technology and Anita Bonik, our Director of Communications and Technology, will take over.
All right. In the technology area, we just want to let you, let you all know that we're following the proper sanitizing in between users for our laptops and desktop keyboards. So that took place, deep cleaning took place when we left and it will take place in between users each time. As already been mentioned, Schoology will be our K-12 learning management system. It'll be used in both in-person and remote instruction. This helps us remain as prepared and fluid for any time students have to leave one in-school session for a period of time, potentially due to COVID, and then follow along at home via Schoology. It also prepares all of our teachers to be uploading and keeping their classrooms in person on Schoology should another shutdown take place. Should, for those that are choosing the Anchor Bay Virtual Academy, families who don't have access to a device for their child can have one loaned out to them from the school district. And we will also, on the registration form, make sure they have internet connectivity as well. So both of those would have to be supplied if a family did not have that at home. Teachers will be provided technology, training and support. As we've mentioned, we've, we've done a lot in a short period of time. We have lots of training already planned. These are virtual sessions that are optional for teachers starting next week. And then, of course, we do have the two days of professional development already scheduled for September 1st and 2nd. One unique thing that we are planning this year is that parents will be offered Schoology training prior to the start of school. This was already in motion. We had been piloting it for some of our classrooms that were already fully utilizing Schoology. So one of the kind of accountability pieces for the support coaches at home, for those people that are doing the virtual academy, is to make sure that they do attend this training. So they are, have full access as parents to be able to guide their students at home. And students will be required to maintain academic integrity. Another way of saying that is honesty. We teach that already. That is part of our curriculum in technology. How to, you know, check sources, how not to plagiarize. Obviously, we do have some mechanisms that we can use when remote test-taking takes place. There are things built into Schoology that will help with that as well. But we are really expecting our students to have high academic integrity for those that are choosing the remote and virtual academy at home. So now Superintendent Woodside is going to go over the next steps with the board and then we'll have an opportunity for other questions.
Man, you.
No, yeah, use the mic.
When we began this, I want to say again, this is our first run-through with the board. And what the board will need to do is approve by August 15. We'll need to approve our, our roadmap. The committees are to continue to refine and update return school roadmap. And the Anchor Bay Virtual Academy registration is next week, the 6th to 13th. And we'll provide also updates. So one of the things we're doing is developing a question and answer. And we're going to send that out to parents and put it on our website. So a lot of the questions that we have gotten up to this date about face-to-face, virtual learning, all those things, we're going to, we're going to, as we get those questions, we're going to post them as we go forward. So we're working on that now. But also this evening, this is the opportunity for the board, for any questions or additions that they would like to see. I know there, there was a couple of things that were discussed, the idea of the wearing a mask in secondary, but the elementary's where it's just in the hallways and going for classes. There was discussion about the virtual learning. So this is the opportunity for the board to share your ideas for our roadmap to return.
Okay. Thank you to all the administrators, Mr. Woodside. Thanks for that very informative presentation. So I guess I'll open it up to the board members. Does anybody have, has any comments or questions?
Actually, John, you have a parent, I believe, or somebody at the bottom who's raised their hand. Marsha something or, I can't see the full name.
Yeah, this is, at this point, this is for board, we, the, the, there is pretty much right after this, there'll be another open forum, so we'll go to the parents at that point. But the board right now, I think there's, I think Steve.
Yeah, I got some comments.
I, I do too.
Okay, we'll go with Steve and then I'll go to Marie.
Okay, so lots of words in the last 45 minutes, but talking reality is, is what is going through the process of when a child is going to school is they have to get on a bus and the bus is going to have to be unsanitized, make sure there's a mask. And I'm not, unless you put another person on the bus, I don't see how we ensure that that process is taking place. Bus drivers today have enough trouble getting, not trouble, but enough responsibility, making sure the students, the traffic's clear, the students get in the bus, but to make sure that the children have their mask on, the sanitizing beforehand. I don't see how I expect the current bus drivers to do that. Back to where we used to have bus helpers on the bus. Again, secondly is concerning the bus and just the process throughout the school day as what's the type, we've got to add 15 minutes, 20 minutes between runs at least because now I'm having to check every child getting on the bus. Then I got to have them check in at the school and they can't congregate, so they have to stay in the bus and go into school. So between just the wait time for the buses, but also the wait times going in the buildings. Now we go elementary, second, elementary through secondary, the two secondaries. We're going to need to extend the school, school day throughout elementary through high school. I don't see how, is it added, added overhead of checking kids, making sure they're clean, coming into buildings, specifically in the winter also, I mean, one thing to have everybody standing outside six feet apart. So I don't, I don't, I didn't hear anything about that today. Secondly, the same, same similar issues I see on the bus drivers issues. Today we have, it's the elementary's, the secretary and the data parent office, of course, we have other parents. Right now, the office personnel are the ones that are checking temperatures and everything else today, whether the kid's got a fever or has got the flu or whatever. I don't see how I expect to have somebody monitoring, making sure these things are followed up with our additional, like additional data parent to be monitoring and making sure that all these steps are taken in terms of making sure the temperatures are taken or whatever. My, my point is it's going to take more overhead and more people. I didn't hear anything about that today. Just hear that. And I, and I, I was very distressed as I hear all the presentations today is everything, we're going to do this as much as possible. We're going to do this as much as possible. It shouldn't be as much as possible. If you're going to do it, you do it. You don't do it as much as possible. I would not agree to any plan that says as much as possible. Again, the mask thing, I don't see how you avoid having masks at the elementary level. Now, maybe, maybe you have some exceptions at kindergarten or first or second, but I don't see how. The issue of positive things, a mask where you tell fourth, fifth grade, you don't need a mask in the classroom. I don't see how that's consistent. That's just my general comments, but again, I see, I, what I heard today was basically what I read in the guidelines, you guys saw like six or seven, six or eight minutes. General template made, what I'm looking for is implementation, how are you going to implement this stuff? Because that's where the rubber meets the road in terms of how we're going to execute this. I think that's the expectation the parent is, we're going to do this, but how are you going to do it? I don't see, personally, I don't see how in three weeks you're going to train a bunch of people to check all these students, get helpers on buses to implement. I just don't think there's time and I don't think you're going to do it effectively. Because I haven't seen that plan. I haven't seen the implementation, I guess. I see a lot of words. I know what we're supposed to do. I can read those off of the, go off the website. We shall do this, we shall do this. I just, we're going to do, we're going to do face-to-face, do it right or don't do it. Personally, I think we should wait to phase five, but I guess that's my comments.
All right. Marie?
Well, when we did a preview at the curriculum committee, we did raise the questions about how were the temperatures going to be taken? So as soon as that is available, you can't have one or two people at a door and get, you know, four, five hundred kids into a building, taking each of their temperatures and get them into a classroom and so on. So I would really like those details as Steve mentioned. You know, you may have that information, but I, I do think that we need to have that shared of, of the logistics of that when we actually get to that point. One of the parents brought up about the book bags. I know that we used to not allow book bags on wheels because they would not fit in the lockers. Is that something that would be revised because that answers the other question? You know, do we put book bags on the floors and so on? But if a book bag on wheels is allowed, they won't be going in the lockers anyway. But that would allow the book bag to stand up and not have to be sitting on the floor, moved around where there possibly could be contamination. So I think I'd like some clarification on that also. I had another question that was asked and I thought of too. When a child is quarantined for, let's say, 14 days, are they allowed then to be part of the virtual program? Or how will that be handled? Because we're saying that if you sign up for virtual, it has to be done in a timely manner, then they have to stay in virtual for the semester. But how do we handle those students who are quarantined and kept out for several weeks at a time? And I think that it should be made clear of exactly how far apart kids are going to be in a classroom. I know that's difficult to do right now because you don't know how many are in virtual. You don't know how many are actually going to be in classrooms. But the feasibility of maintaining, is there going to be a cap on the number of kids in a class so that you can at least have a certain distance between them? And what is acceptable within the guidelines? So those are just a couple of the major questions that I hear.
I have a couple more of them. Terms of, did anybody else speak, I mean, one's real quick, did any other board members, Ms. Burkmeyer, she, you?
Yeah, I just wanted to add kind of to Steve's questions. You know, not just the buses, but you know, when students are entering, my experience with the elementary schools for drop-off, you know, until they're allowed to either enter the school because it's too early, you know, kids do congregate right around that, the main doors. And I know we could potentially maybe, you know, spread them out amongst other doors. Many of our buildings have that option that we don't utilize currently, but maybe we could. But, you know, it seems like we would, you know, the idea would be to not have kids congregate, so we should let them into the building to go to their classroom. But then that again, you know, would lead to an issue of, you know, kids unsupervised in the class. How early are they showing up? When do we actually let them in? Because, I mean, you got to open your door at some point, but when, when are you going to do that? And, you know, I, I'm sure no matter whenever you choose that time to allow the kids to start coming in and go sit down, you know, you're still going to get some kids hanging outside a little bit earlier than that. You know, so then they could be unsupervised in the classroom, which would be a whole other issue. You know, and that's time that I know that our teachers are getting ready for the day or prepping, you know, making copies or doing things. So I don't, I don't think it would be logical to, to assume that, you know, a teacher is going to supervise them before, you know, contractually, they've even started the day. So that's just one other thing. You know, you could contain them on the buses a little bit, but for all the drop-off students or the walkers and things, you know, we got to think about how, where they're going to be too. And while they are outside, you know, we still, if you're talking about hundreds of kids coming through the front door, you know, that you're still, again, not, not very well socially distancing. So we got to have a plan for that as well.
My only comment is, I apologize for buttoning. I just want to make sure. I really, I can't wrap my head around this working. And I know you guys put in a ton of effort and I appreciate the effort. My biggest fear is we, we try to do this in face, in person, school, and three weeks after we start, we got to shut down anyway. Because I really don't think you're going to stop the spread. There's just, there's too many what-ifs, there's too many chances for cross-contamination, there's too many issues with staff. And then what do you do if you lose four teachers? Now you got four subs you're trying to find, you know? And then what happens if a whole class gets quarantined? Now you got possibility of 25 kids that, that have now got to be 100% online or they're going to be out for 14 days. I just, the logistics of it, I think, are too great. And I really don't think, as well intentioned as it is, I really don't think we can protect the teachers and the students the way we want right now in phase four.
I have, sorry, I thought you were done, Mike.
Yep, I'm done. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to touch on a few things that both Mike and Lisa and Marie and Steve mentioned in a little bit more detail. I have done a lot of research, paid attention to, as I'm sure a lot of us have, to what other districts are doing, other states, you know, as other states start in August versus our September. And I've seen a pretty, and I've done 12 hours of training this week alone as a school counselor, trying to wrap our heads around how we're helping students. And something has popped up very consistently across counties and states with me is a lot of schools are opting to start in an online environment first. And what I would like maybe us to consider is maybe we start the first three weeks in an online environment to see, like Mike had said, hey, we start this three weeks from now, we got to go to an online environment. It's easier to move from an online environment to face-to-face than from face-to-face backwards to an online environment. So just some food for thought of starting maybe the first Monday in October back in the district if things have, you know, shown somewhat positive in other districts that maybe are starting in September with the face-to-face options and seeing how things, not to say letting other districts be our guinea pig, but almost to see how things are working there, what works for them, what doesn't work for them. You know, like I, I think Mr., or Mr. Middlestat may have brought up about upper elementary. I don't see any difference between a fourth and fifth grader and a sixth grader. If our secondary students are wearing masks all day long, maybe the upper elementary students, I can see issues for lower L, for kindergarten, first grade. But maybe our upper elementary levels who, I mean, when you're in fourth and fifth grade, you're getting grades just like you do in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And you're preparing them to be a middle school student. So, you know, maybe reconsidering that option. Another thought that came to my head is a lot of people have reached out to me and said, hey, if you can't social distance on the bus, I ain't putting my kid on the bus. So maybe we need to send a survey out to say how many people plan on using transportation to and from school. Because that may alleviate some of Mr. Middlestat's concerns in regards to how long it gets kids on the bus and off the bus. And, you know, to my understanding, we've answered this question, we are not doing temperature checks at school. We are expecting parents to do that before they send their child to school. So we're not doing it at the door. We're not doing it in the classroom. We're not asking a classroom teacher to do it. So, you know, that's not going to be a concern. I've had a lot of people contact me and say, hey, my district or my sister-in-law's district is doing a hybrid version. They're coming to school on Tuesdays and Thursdays and they're doing remote learning Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Or they're doing it the opposite way around. I think we need to, to not only have a very rigid this option or that option. I think we maybe. I think we maybe need to look at a little bit more flexibility. And like Mr. Moses brought up, it's very hard to manage this. But if you are minimizing the numbers of days and hours and saturation time spent in a building to two days a week versus five days a week, that also may have a huge, huge difference. So looking at that. And I really want, you know, to make people understand that even though this plan when laid out in black and white looks like there's not flexibility, I don't want to tell and nor will I ever agree to say to somebody that you picked this plan, so you're stuck in it for ten weeks. Because we're, or twenty weeks, which is the first semester. I think we need to be more flexible and offer more options. And people shouldn't have to jump through hoops to move their child from a classroom structure to an online or from online to a classroom. And I know it's hard to put it on paper, and I get that. But I think we need to reevaluate some of those issues. And I think as long as we, even if we were to open it in an online environment, we need to offer daycare and SAC programs to our working families so that that issue, if they choose to use it, is addressed. And that, you know, when a parent in the comfort of their own home can sit down in the evening after dinner to go over to the daily work with that child that may be sat in a daycare or SAC program, might allay a lot of fears for some families and offer more options for our families, especially our working families that, you know, have to, you know, our nurses and our doctors and our EMTs and police who have to respond and need to work every single day. So I think that is something else that I'd like to see addressed.
All right, Ms. Hendershot, Pat, Marie, did you have something?
Yeah, you know, everybody's, when you're the sixth person to speak, everyone else has covered everything. So everybody has made excellent points. To Ms. Hendershot's point of being able to provide either SAC or opening our early childcare centers, I think that's something that we need to look at if we consider going to virtual. One of the things that's frustrating me through this whole process is I sit in presentations at the board and we see our test scores and we hear how we're leaders in Macomb County. And, you know, we're one of the top two or three districts. And then we wait for other districts to make decisions and we follow suit. I don't understand that. If we're gonna play like the big boys we pretend like we are, we need to be looking at Ann Arbor, West Bloomfield, Plymouth Canton, Birmingham, Rochester, and figuring out what these other leaders in these districts that are maybe a little bit larger than us that typically lead their counties as well. If we're truly a leader in Macomb County, why, why do we keep looking at what other districts are doing in Macomb County? We need to make decisions that are right for our kids, not that are right for the other fourteen or fifteen, nineteen districts that we have in Macomb County for truly a leader. So, Ms. Middlestat's comments, I definitely heard. And I think Ms. Hendershot talked about the busing and the lack of participation that's gonna happen with busing. I believe that the busing numbers are probably gonna be down to about forty percent, fifty percent. That creates a whole traffic debacle around our schools, worse than it already is if you go there to drop your kid off in the morning. Any of you that go to any schools, even our high school, you know, I think, believe that we had a student hit last year at the high school being dropped off. So it's already KS, our law enforcement and our resources are already stretched trying to keep things civil at the school. I have grave concerns, everyone's already mentioned them, I won't, I won't rehash all those. But as a leader quote in Macomb County, we, we need to make some decisions that are right for our students, and the sooner, the better.
Right. I would echo that, Pat, and like you said, as far as everybody's kinda covered everything, I'll get straight to the point. Is, we've been in a lot of committee meetings over the past couple of weeks, hours long. I know the Curriculum Committee bantered about a lot of stuff. We did it in policy and finance, and it all comes back to what Mr. Moses was saying and Mr. Middlestat. I don't see how it's, we're gonna be able to do these things. And as much as hard work as administration's put into it, I know the teachers have, I know there's multiple meetings going on at the school during the day, I believe, with the teachers and administration trying to figure this out. But it's just to try to keep the social distancing, to try to keep the kids away from each other and to prevent these, you know, these confirmed cases, we know it's gonna happen. I mean, I'm in the construction field, they opened up construction May seventh, and a week later, we had confirmed cases on multiple job sites. Happens every week now. So in, when Ms. Hendershot brings up, you know, the SAC, the biggest problem, I mean, I'm for believing that we should be looking at all options of, you know, going virtual that first semester, maybe the, you know, the first three weeks, if that's an option, if that's a way to help it out. I know, you know, in the policy, Moses, Mr. Moses and I were talking about it. It's, then we could put all of our energy towards making it the best online program. And instead of, right now, we're, we're, we're working for so many what ifs. And we know we don't have the capabilities to, to handle every issue. To Mr. Middlestat's point, I mean, I, I get it, I'm with you. I'd love to see, not when possible, because when possible, the parents are gonna say, you're not gonna do it. Just like the take, you can take of the temperatures, we know we can't take the temperatures of every kid coming in. So confirmed cases are gonna get by you. That's what's gonna happen. And then what? Then you got, then you got your schools shutting down. But if we can, the, the working parents, I get it, right now, parents listening are probably going, I got three kids, I gotta work, I got, you know, I, I get it. So I think, you know, like you all said, we need to really take a closer look at this. We're three weeks out from school and we need to figure it out. But I just don't see, given the current climate, given the current, whichever, you know, other districts, as you said, Mr. Green, a lot of them that I see are going online. And a lot of the bigger districts are going more and more to online because they're, they're grappling with the same thing we are. Big article in Cranes today, I read. It's the same issue, we, there's just no good answer. And I get all the parents' concerns. Mr. Richards, you know, he, I get it, you had a lot of people reach out to you with a lot of questions. We all have the same ones. It's, it's a tough thing to do, but we gotta make the best decision for the students of Anchor Bay. And, you know, I think maybe we'll have to go back to the, your onboard on some of this and get something. When did you say, Mr. Woodside, that we have to have this approved by? August fifteenth?
No, I wanna share much of what the board discussed. Also, some, like, from parents' side, pretty similar to what the administrators have been discussing. So we were fully aware of the obvious. But your roadmap, that is required. You do need, and roadmap, you do need to say how, how we would have students. You hear me now? It's sounding like a commotion. Am I loud and clear?
Yes.
Yeah, what I was saying was, the, as the administrators, teachers, support staff have worked on this and talked, many of the same questions have come up that the board has, and many of the same questions that, you know, we got from, from parents. So we're, we're fully aware of some of the obvious things. We're working through it. But this roadmap to return to school is something that we are required to do and we are required to submit it by August fifteenth. So we have to move forward in regards to that. We are looking at, you know, different options. The idea that it be virtual, the idea that it would be in person, or the idea like a few of the board members talked about, to meet that social distancing requirement, your classrooms are twenty-five by twenty-five feet. So that comes out to maybe thirteen, fourteen students for each classroom. So in order to meet that social distancing, as the board is asking, that would be at the very least, you know, school every other day is in order to, to meet that. But I think some of the things as far as additional support on buses and the students coming in, yes, those are, we have considered those, we are working on those, and we are working through. That's the more detailed plan. But, you know, we, we are aware that in order to, you know, meet those and have it work, rather than just say it, that it is gonna need additional staff and additional support, you know, to do it. But ultimately, in the end, as far as I know, you know, what Patrick had shared, you know, yes, we, we are one of the leaders in the county. As far, overall, as far as test scores, you look at our buildings, you know, you look at the staff we have. This is a great district. And ultimately, it's the board's decision whether we can teach online or not. That's a board decision as far as that. So we've heard the, the comments from the board loud and clear, and we will take all those into account. But I can assure you, yes, we do, do realize that virtual is prior to it. One of the things on the virtual, we've got a lot of questions about, is that, you know, virtual is, is that legitimately video where kids from home would be able to see their instructor? And I'm assuming as a board, that's what you're saying? Or when you talk about virtual, the opportunity for kids to go virtual, I'm assuming that's what we're all saying.
Yeah.
That's a question back to the board. This is good that we have this dialogue. And remember, this plan is a draft. So this is good that we have this, this discussion. I think much of it, we anticipated. And we'll move forward, you know, with the plan, with the idea that we, you know, the board may choose to go online to start the school year. There are about thirty districts in the state at this time that have chosen to, either they're gonna be out the first semester till January or they'll be out for six weeks. So that has been a discussion.
I, I get the, and I'll speak for myself and I'll see if anybody has any comments. But I, to your point, I mean, I, I commend the district and the teachers and everybody, all the committees that have been working on these. I mean, for the state to put out that you need to have, you know, in face, virtual, hybrid, all these different options for, which is great in theory. But you don't have unlimited buildings, unlimited teachers, unlimited space and unlimited money to, to pay for it all. So if they want us to do that, they need to come to the table with so much more resources for us. But I think a lot of what we talked about in those committee meetings was you're trying so hard to hit so many different options and, and to do good in all those options when, and I get it, it's a hard decision, and it is a board decision, and we'll have to talk about it and see what we wanna do. But to make that hard decision, and a lot of these boards have already done it, to say, we're gonna go virtual, and then make that the best aim, virtual option that's out there for that first semester, that first six weeks or whatever it is. Because again, and I think it was Mr. Moses that said it, what if you lose a couple of teachers? I mean, then, then you're really gonna be shot. So, so I, this isn't, I don't think it's necessarily a hit on you guys as much as it is we get that this, this is almost an impossible task.
No, 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 I didn't take it as that. But ultimately, you know, Todd, you could jump in. The, the flexibility we have with the days and hours is gonna expire September thirtieth. So the state has not extended that flexibility yet. Now, you know, I think it's likely to happen, but I, I, you know, I can't promise. But that is a factor. I believe, you know, Todd, I believe it is September thirtieth?
That's correct, Lennon.
You know, the days and hours, as far as the flexibility?
Yeah, so the executive order that suspends the requirements of hours of instruction and days of instruction expire September thirtieth. And without further executive orders, we would be required to comply with those hours and days in order to receive our full foundation allowance from the state of Michigan, which makes up roughly eighty to eighty-five percent of our funding for the school district.
Can I jump in?
Ms. Burkmeyer?
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, I, I guess I can, I can tell you that I'm still on the fence here, in a sense. I look at it as a board member, listening in some of these committee meetings and feeling like, like you guys have also shared, that these are somewhat impossible hurdles. And if people realize, if, if the public realize just how many of those hurdles exist, let alone, you know, and that they're all pretty, a lot of them are out of our control, things that are being mandated that you must do for safety, or they're just common sense things that we should do for safety. But like we've said, with staff and, and money and things like that, it really puts us in a bind on how to do it. That said, if it, you know, if, I guess I just wanna throw out to the other board members, if the idea of, you know, virtual to start the year takes hold, you know, I think we, there's a pretty good understanding among most of us that especially like the lower elementary, you know, I don't think that virtual is very conducive for those students. If you think about a kindergarten or going to school for the first time and meeting their stu, their teacher online, you know, put a hybrid option, I know there are, there are districts that have done, you know, where they're saying high school is virtual, but elementary is not, you know? And that might give us more ability to space out by having more building or, you know, to, or even if we only did something like lower elementary reported. Because I think it would be in the best interest of those students. And of course, we could encourage masks, right? But we know it's not mandated. You know, I, I just, I'm, I'm not somebody on, on this thinking who's a hundred percent on board with virtual education. I have two students that are gonna be in second and third grade, and I'm a working parent. My husband works. And we both work in jobs, I mean, I'm in healthcare and he's in education. We will not be home. So to do this, you know, would require from, for example, for my family, that I would need to rely on my parents, you know, who are older, you know? And do they wanna do that? And they have to help their parents who are older yet. And so do they wanna be exposed to all of my family? Not necessarily. But would they? Probably. You know, but it, it's just that there's a whole long string of effects that, that also come into play by us canceling in-person school. And I don't mean to imply that school is a babysitter. I've heard those arguments. But I, I truly believe, especially the lower the grade you go, that in-person school is so important. You know, and, and it's, like I said, especially lower down for kindergarten and, you know, maybe lower elementary altogether. But that said, to parents, I want to explain to parents and to understand that, you know, as a parent personally, like I've said, there's really nothing I would personally want more than to be able to send my kids to in-person school. Even, even with a lot of these things that we're talking about, you know, these safeguards, I personally am on the boat, I'll just be out there and say it, of sending my children to school. Now, my kids are younger, like I said, so that also plays into a little bit. That said, I've had this opportunity to be on the board and listen to the things that are thrown back and forth between board members and administrators. And I know teachers are involved and other support staff. And listening to the staff tirelessly working, trying to navigate this process that is not, you know, self-imposed. I mean, a lot of these things are out of our control or like, or common sense things to do to keep people safe. But we don't have the budget, we don't have all of the resources to do them correctly. So I know that this is like such an anxiety-provoking situation for families, myself included, honestly. But please understand that our administrators and our staff are doing everything right now to kind of try and navigate this process nearly blind, while carrying the weight of all of our students and all of our families on their backs trying to figure out what to do correctly and to keep everybody safe. And I think I would be remiss if I didn't say to just please be patient and understanding. I know all my answers, I do too. And we don't have all the details because we're still trying to find a way to make this the best experience and the most normal, in a very abnormal, rare situation that we can try and find. So whichever even, you know, whichever route things start to keep going, I just want people to understand that, you know, as a board member, I understand you. I think all of the other board members understand as well, the administrators understand. But let's give some grace, knowing that our staff and our children's safety are- knowing that our staff and our children's safety are everybody's number one priority right now. And even if things don't turn out the way you particularly would like for your child or your family, please know that everybody is working to try and come to the best solution for everybody.
Yeah, I think Lisa, you, I mean, you really pointed it out. I mean, that's the two, obviously, you know, the issues, you know, with going to all online, when I say that, I mean, I know that's going to upset a lot of parents. And it would make, everybody's got their issue, you know, their home lives, work, working parents, I would say majority of households are probably two working parents. And it would be tough to do, but that's, that's why these decisions that we have are, they're bad and bad. Perfect world is they get to go to school and and we, you know, we keep keep them safe and we can guarantee that they're safe. And, you know, I think the plan that they're working out is is good. And, you know, we could always try it, see if it work, you know, see how it goes. But I'm just worried about getting into, and I've heard the questions from, you know, parents is, you know, how many confirmed cases before you shut down? What happens with the confirmed case? I get, they went over some things, they're quarantined for fourteen days, but how many people are quarantined when they go into that classroom? And if they were on a bus, and then if they ran into kids in the hallway? I mean, it it just, it it festers on itself, and that that scares the crap out of me, especially with the kids of our district, so. Mr. Middlestead?
I have a question. If we were to decide secondary right off the get-go, and assist the administration of working on a better plan for the elementary, I'm just thinking as we're trying to do everything, if we were just to say first four weeks, let's sign virtual secondary and work on the elementary without the use. I'm just trying to think of comments. Because I think, because I think, point is, is like, people with their kids at home, if they're in middle of high school, that's not as big of a, it's always an issue having kids at home. But I'm just thinking as if it would help alleviate, at least from the start of the school year, to say we're not going to do any in face-to-face for everybody right off the get-go, maybe a difficulty. But secondary, it seems like that that would be something that would be feasible, at least for the three, first three to four weeks. And then if we can pull them back into face-to-face after we phased them. I think try to focus our effort, K-12, if we focus their efforts face-to-face, if that's what we want to do, K-5, we can focus on half, half of this, while the others, or the other half, where we can go, we can start right now and say, we're going to do a virtual, let's make it work, let's get all those plans together, we're going to continue working on the face-to-face plan. Maybe it is only K's, K through second face-to-face, or K through third. Can we check that off and say, let's focus? Take, take half the load off of that decision, make half the decision, I guess.
I think the idea that we're going to reconvene next week.
Definitely.
To, to answer your question, Steve and the other board members, we can come back with a more detailed plan. The idea that if we were to start the school year online, how we will do it, this would be the recommendation, best way to, you know, implement. I think you would, you know, then this way the board could see it in a little more detail. So the idea that we're getting together next week, I think that we should, you know, put different options, hard to see, you know, two options. And then we'll talk about starting the year, you know, later, pushing it back, going starting online, then what we would do after that, whether it be still at the other face-to-face full-time. I think as a district, we can put, we can put that together and answer a lot of the questions that the board and community have. Have that for next week and for kids' year.
And you'd be able to.
I think it's pretty loud and clear the idea of online, starting the year that way. So that will give us the opportunity, split out both options before the board on how that would work, so you can see the detail on it.
And you could put together a, because obviously it'd be to what Ms. Hendershot was saying about as far as SAG programs and daycare program, whatever we could do to help out those parents, you'd be able to have idea of what that program would look like.
Yeah.
Because there'd be a lot more kids who will recur.
No, I mean, we, you know, as far as SAG and how that would work, you know, that's something that we've got to work on. But then. Question, I think we could, you know, we get together early next week. So we can put that together with the board.
Was that, Ms. Hendershot, did you have something to say?
Well, two things, one is I'm having a hard time hearing Mr. Woodside.
He's just going to get closer to him.
And two is I, from what Lisa and Steve both said, and I I said it similarly, is that I think K through second grade will have a hard time with online instruction. I think grades three through, you know, so your upper L, even if you just want to do four and five, all the way through secondary is much more familiar, they're much more computer savvy and utilize it probably on a daily basis anyways, probably have since March. I'm sure most of our kids have been connected to some kind of electronic device since March. Maybe, you know, looking at, like Lisa said, the kindergarten, the first and the second grade, and maybe being able to space them out throughout the building a little bit differently because other classrooms won't be in use, might be helpful. Or maybe having, where you break it up, remember, you know, you used to have AM kindergarten and PM kindergarten? Maybe something even similar to AM first grade, AM, you know, and then PM first grade, where you have less kids coming, so that they're still getting some kind of face-to-face instruction. But maybe instead of having twenty-eight kids, maybe you have fourteen in the morning and fourteen in the afternoon, and going over the math, English, the basics to help those kids, you know, transition into school and maybe supplement the first and second graders online as well at home with their parents, with extra, with those specials and things like that. So just a little food for thought, you know. I agree with Pat when he said, either you do it right or you don't do it at all. I believe he's the one that said that. And I think Mr. Middlestead said that as well, is you can't do anything half-heartedly. So either you're going to do online one hundred percent and give your all to it, or, you know, you have this face-to-facing, it's this when necessary or when appropriate or as available. We all know that in the real world, with the resources that we have, that's not really an option, and if we're honest with ourselves, when we, when we speak out loud, we all know that's going to be very difficult. And I think every school district that's already made the decision to go online has already made that acknowledgement to themselves. So as much as my idea is, school is school, you you go out, you get on a bus, you go to a school, you walk into a brick-and-mortar building, you see your teacher, you interact. We can't give that to our kids safely right now. That's outside of our control. No matter what any of us say today, we don't have control over the, this pandemic right now. And until we're in phase five, we need to be very precautious because I don't want to be the person that feels responsible for one student, one staff member who gets sick or heaven forbid passes away from this horrible disease.
All right, any other board members? Comments, questions? All right, we'll look forward to having a another meeting next week to take a look at that final plan and get it approved. All right, moving on to the first reading of the policies. We had a policy committee meeting last week when we released policies.
Okay, you have in your pack, sorry, is it my turn?
Yep.
Okay. You have in your packet the policies that need to be updated as provided for by Lusk Albertson. We can go through them, the, the first one, policy one thousand one, as well as four thousand two, expand the definition of what a relative is. That just makes it more clear for the board when taking action. Policies number one thousand two, there's two changes to that. That's provided for by to stay consistent and in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. The policy change to two thousand two is because that language is in two places within the board policy, so it just removes it for redundancy. Two thousand six is being added due to some changes with the pupil accounting manual, some requirements with that. Two thousand seven is proposed as a change due to a change in the revised school code. Four thousand two and eight thousand six, those changes are to maintain compliance with Title IX. Recently, the federal government published a new set of guidelines for Title IX and and changed the entire way Title IX is handled. And then we're at five thousand three. The Lusk Albertson recommends that, just making the change for clarity and precision with our, with our wording. And then finally, policy six thousand twelve, that is recommended to comply with the amendments to the Federal Clean Water Act. Does anyone have any questions regarding these changes?
I do. Page three, three of the conflict.
Yes.
Discuss that before. We decided that the definition by the state law would hold and that we would not try to attempt to spell out every relative in law, this, this, and this. And then also you add conflict of interest as somebody who resides at the same location as a board member. In the policy, if you say board members will be framed in illegal conflicts of interest, not those limited to those identified in the state law, that the state law would be the one that defines it, I don't know why we would try to redefine the state law. So please look at that state law and see if it defines it adequately else in a board policy, you shouldn't have to repeat what's already law. But there's an exception. The other one is, is a, this attendance intruency. It specifies that the billing principal concludes that parents failing to comply with Michigan's school attendance, they can call protective services, the police department, or prosecutor's office. I have been in the school district many years, I think there has to be a higher level of, we're going to go through the process of sending somebody to protective services and prosecutor's office. If we need to have more of an understanding of, maybe a review of what that process is. My personal opinion is, is that the billing principal feels that there's lawful intent to violate the law, that somehow they go to the HR director and the superintendent. Certainly, if they're going to go to protective services or go to the, or go or go to the prosecutor's office, if there's an immediate danger to the student's health or welfare, if it's a matter of struggling parent has had ten late days, and now their, now their absences are there, that principal feels, I'm going to, I'm going to make sure that they know that the rules are the rules, and I'm going to file with the protective services. I think it has to have a higher level of approval. And I think we need to have that reviewed by the administrator. And if we're going to actually go to a prosecutor, child protective services, and superintendent, that's my personal opinion. So you could please review that, see if there's a process that that can look over, because billing to billing, we need, it's difficult to be consistent with these attendance things. There are rules and there's issues. And I I think, I think it needs to be at a single point that says, okay, this month, this parent's been doing this, do you feel that this is, this is lawful intent? And that this is not just, the parent needs some assistance? And we can provide that assistance rather than say, well, shoot, I'm just going to report them because I have. I'm not saying, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I know principals do their jobs and work with parents, whatever. I just, I just think there needs to be a higher level of scrutiny. They're going to go to the prosecutor's attendance.
Okay, that's my opinion. Any other comments on that, on the policies, first reading of the policies? All right. We'll move on to union communications. Do you have anybody, Tim?
Well, there's a lot of comments, I don't know if they're all for union yet, I can.
It's probably for the next, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can ask.
Here, who you got?
So here's where they start, it looks like.
What's that?
Here's where it starts, can you see that there or not? I don't know if you can read.
Is there a way they can raise their hand if they want to talk?
Oh, there you go. Yeah, they should be able to, and no.
Yeah, we'll go to public comment if one of the union reps is on there.
I don't see anyone, no one's raised their hand.
All right. Well, if any parent wants to speak, I know this is kind of a weird way of doing it. Just message Tim or message the the group here and we'll, we'll let you speak. So I guess do.
They can, they're, they're allowed to unmute themselves now.
Oh, okay. Everybody has the ability to unmute yourself, so if anybody wants to speak, because we're possibly going to go into closed session here, so. I'll give it a minute.
So Nick, Nick, Nico and Rachel.
All right, Nick, that would like to speak?
Hold on, I want to try and get on here, the video. It's not letting me get on. Can you guys hear me?
No.
Okay. My concern is that I have a senior, an eighth grader, so middle school, and then we have a kindergartner, so we have all three of the levels of schools here. And so our concern is obviously for our kindergartner getting started in school, and then for our senior with her senior year. We, as you guys have expressed, we don't feel that it's safe to send our kids back to school right now. But we also know that they need the socializing, and they need to be with their friends, and they need to have instruction from teachers, because we are not teachers. But I am afraid that if they do go back to school, we're going to have, I mean, I, no matter when, I think, you know, like school always, when they go back in the fall, they always end up, you know, coming down with something like a flu, or there's always something. And I'm just afraid that as these kids, I don't believe that my high schooler and my middle schooler, that they're going to do like the social distancing, like if somebody's not looking. I don't trust that that's going to happen with high schoolers or middle schoolers. But if I send my, my kids to school, I feel as if I'm putting them in danger, and then the coronavirus is going to spread, and then they're back home when they're already gotten into a routine of being in school. So I'm just, we're very like, I I don't know how, it's like, we want to send them, but it's, I mean, I myself had coronavirus in May, and it is very, very, it's a very, very real disease. And our youngest has respiratory issues. And it's not something that I want our kids to be exposed to. But we definitely need to know that if we do the virtual, that our kids will be guided and supported even at the kindergarten level, because I'm not a teacher. I don't know if any of that, if that made sense to you guys. It's just, I'm in turmoil because I have a high school, middle school, and elementary. So we're stuck in such a hard place right now.
Yeah, that's, we 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 get your concern, we understand where where you're coming from. That is, we're going to try to, I think, after a lot of the comments heard today from the board members and their parents, and you'll talk with the superintendent and the rest of the administration, we're going to be back at this next week, and we'll try to address, you know,
address, you know, even better in more detail, all these questions that are out there and where, where exactly we're going to go moving forward. So we appreciate your concerns and thank you for speaking.
Thank you so much.
We have, next is Shannon. I'll probably hack.
Yeah, it's Najeeh. Thank you. First, Rachel, let me say I'm so sorry that you guys went through that. It is a horrible disease and, um, I totally understand. I, I want to talk first about what Mr. Cusmano said about the social emotional learning. That is so huge and I appreciate the fact that he addressed that. Student self-awareness, self-management, self-awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making are huge. All of that plays into whether you're in person or remote. Those are going to be huge for anchor-based students especially. We have so many in our district in need. I took so many notes. I think I have like fifty pages of notes. The board said some amazing things. I appreciate the fact that you said whatever virtual platform we go with. I know our, our learning management system is Schoology and I really did some good learning on that this spring and the teachers of my sixth grader and seventh grader at the time really helped to educate us. I appreciate the fact that you said you would not use third-party vendors, not use non-anchor Bay teachers for that. So whether we're virtual or in-person or all virtual, you will be using anchor Bay teachers. And that's our biggest concern because our anchor Bay teachers are fabulous. We love them. I think when Steve talked about taking temperatures, I made a connection because I was at the dentist today. I walked in from outside. My temperature was one hundred point four for seven and a half minutes and then it went down to ninety-seven point nine. And that took ten minutes of one person getting a temperature check. That was huge. How many minutes do we have to wait for each student to get the temperature taken? I appreciate what Mr. Moses said about three weeks after the start. If we have some, some cases, um, we're going to shut down anyway. I mean, there's like everybody on the board. I could reiterate all my notes. Everybody had so many questions. I definitely appreciate, um, the thinking outside the box. Who was it? Ms. Henderson was talking about thinking outside the box, a lot of research in other districts and states. The Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, I push back on that a little bit by just like, how are the parents supposed to juggle that? Parents are in their schedule, that hybrid schedule is really tough. I want, I looked at a, a, one district in Oakland County. Was it Mr. Green who talked about, let's look at our leaders in, in Oakland County since we are a leader in Macomb County? What are they doing? That's what we in education do, right? We look at our models, we, and we, and we tweak it for our population. And I think we can do that in Anchor Bay as well. I know one district is using one hundred percent virtual. And I know Anchor Bay can do it. They did an amazing job in the spring with the training and I love the idea of bringing teacher, uh, parents in, train the parents. One hundred percent virtual, maybe learning labs with those parents that just can't do it at home. What's the percentage? Thirty percent maybe? I don't know, I'm guessing, I'm making it up probably. Sorry about that. But having some learning labs open for kids and parents that don't have the technology or the know-how at home. Like let's bring those kids with 504s and IEPs into the school. And let's use those, someone said, underutilized staff to help them where teachers can do full-on person virtual learning. I mean, that's just an option if the board is going toward virtual learning. Otherwise, that whole in-person face-to-face, there's just so many questions and I'm done. I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I think that's all we have there.
Anthony?
Oh, I got it. Anthony?
Yes, thank you. So we've been showing the, the draft plan for the reopening procedure. But we are expected to vote starting tomorrow with the deadline of the thirteenth, I'm sorry, register starting tomorrow with the deadline of the thirteenth. I know whether we want to send our students to school or not. Given the, uh, concerns raised tonight, is that deadline going to be extended?
Sure, short answer, yes. Mr. Woodside just looked at me and said, yes. I think that, that if I, you know, in all the meetings we were in, that, that original thirteenth deadline was, you know, uh, put in there so they could try to start to plan, they're planning with the teachers, you know, they got to try to, we got to try to plan if we are going to go both, have some kids at, on virtual and some kids in the classroom. You got to make sure you have enough teachers to cover both kids. You know, both groups of kids. So you got to have an idea of where the parents are at right now. And I've heard a lot of that about vision by the thirteenth without, you know, is that decision final? And I think Mr. McDonald hit on that during his section of the, um, the, the plan is that they're fully aware that parents are going to switch. Parents, i- if we do go to the route of both sides, people are going to start online and they're going to realize it's not working for them. It's not working for their kids, this or that. So there's going to be a process for them to move to the in-school and vice versa. Are they going to, you know, is that easy? No. But do we know, we, you know, does administration and the school board and everybody know that we have to do everything we possibly can to make sure that every child is successful and in a, the type of learning environment that's going to be good for them? Yes. So while I get your frustration and I get all the parents frustration out there, sometimes we need some information to just start those conversations forward. And I'll let, you know, Mr. Woodside, if he wants to add any more comments to that.
There you go. But with the input we got from the board today and the idea that we're going to be getting together next week, with giving the board more options and the idea of the online, that I will send out a communication to, uh, families in Anchor Bay that essentially we're going to delay the registration that starts tomorrow. Till we, the board meets the following week. So it'll be something along those lines.
I'll answer your question, Mr., I can't see the full.
Anthony?
Mr. Anthony.
And Stephanie?
Stephanie?
Hi, yeah, Stephanie Richards here. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I apologize, I'm not seeing you nicely. Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Um, first of all, I just, um, thank you for, for having this meeting tonight. You know, um, the plan that you guys put out was obviously a rough draft. My concern that I still have is that we have to make a decision in fifteen days and we're not, uh, we still only have a rough draft. I liked what a lot of the board members say. This is not an easy decision for anybody, parents, board members. So, you know, you guys have a huge decision, a lot of work ahead of you.
Board meeting.
I, I, I'm like Lisa in a way. I want my kids to go to school. I still have a sixth grader and an eleventh grader in the school. And I think in-person school, even for them, even not being elementary is important. But, um, I get the safety factor that goes with it. So I'm torn, just like everybody else. I'm glad to hear that we are taking this very seriously. Um, I think communication is key. And, and I, I look forward to the next meeting and being kept in the loop, you know? There, there's no right decision for everybody. You know, somebody's not going to like it, but, you know, I think safety is key and communication and knowing. And I, and the other parent that just mentioned, I can't choose to send my kid to a virtual academy. I don't know anything about. Someone said that the, the, what we did, um, in the spring was fabulous. I had a different experience. My kids did not do very well in that. And I'll blame myself, I'm not a teacher. So I did the best I could, but I cried many days trying to struggle through it with them. So, um, I hope that if we do go virtual, it is much different, you know, in that aspect. So, um, thank you very much, guys.
You got it. Thank you, Ms. Richards.
Uh, Michael?
Michael?
Hi, yes. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Michael Seaton. I'm a teacher at Anchor Bay Middle School South. And, um, there's a couple of things that kind of kept crossing my mind. I've been doing a lot of thought and, and, um, and this issue. My wife is also a teacher in another Combe County school district. And, uh, one big thing is, um, is safety. And, uh, there's a couple of different avenues with this. One thing that hasn't been brought up, Mr. Case was talking about disinfecting buildings and that sort of thing. But the products that are being used to actual clean and disinfect buildings, those products, some of the ingredients are not safe for people. I've done some pretty deep digging into what they are. Some of them have not been tested enough to know if they are carcinogenic. They have, um, problems with reproductive system. There's a whole slew. If you actually look up the product and you look up the safety data sheets and see what's in them, some of those things are certainly not things that we want to expose ourselves to. So talking about what model to follow and, and system of learning would be best for students, all those things really don't matter if we're exposing our students and staff to toxic chemicals. Along with the face masks, um, there's numerous studies out there that show prolonged periods of time of a face mask on lowers oxygen levels and CO2 levels rise. Those things are certainly, um, things that we shouldn't expose our young minds that are developing to. Also, along with the safety topic, um, I know that we've had countless trainings with Alice and how, uh, intruders bring in weapons and, and things to harm children with bags, backpacks in the classroom. It's just something that we've gone against for so long. And now just to bring that back in and saying that they, they should have, they can bring backpacks in the classroom. That seems to be a pretty big safety liability. On another token, we've had a lot of trainings on what best practices in the classroom. And in phase four, most of the effective strategies are not able to be implemented as a result of social distancing. We've had a lot of trainings on Kagan's cooperative learning. It's very, uh, there's no way that you'd be able to implement those strategies within the classroom with social distancing. I'm one that believes deeply that children can learn a lot from one another, if not more from one another. Even for myself in a structured environment, I, I don't know how that can happen. And phase four, it sounds more like an institution than a classroom. And, and I, I struggle with that. And I'm not one to rock the boat or, or bring up things. But this is something that I, I don't know how I can show up to work and, um, expose myself to chemicals and things that I don't feel are right. And then try to, um, teach students the best of my ability when all my tools in my tool bag, I can't use because of the current conditions. I, I, I think that those things are heard and considered and making your decisions. And again, I know there's no way that everyone is going to be pleased with that. But, um, those are certainly things that have been on my heart and, uh, you know, keep me awake at night. And, and like I said, I'm not somebody that usually speaks up, but those are things that I hadn't necessarily heard that I wanted to bring to your attention.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Seaton on that. And, uh, I guess that's, that is a huge point delivered here to the D and D. So definitely would like to. Is next, Tim?
Madison?
Madison?
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, um, my question is if, is there going to be some sort of schedule that's put out on, you know, how the virtual learning is going to go? In order for me to make a decision, because I am a working parent, I need to know before I sign my child up if this is something that we're going to be able to do and if he's going to be able to succeed at. Um, a lot of the other districts have put out a, out a schedule as to, you know, how long they're going to, you know, be required to be logged on for the virtual learning and their breaks and such. And I was just curious if you guys are going to do the same thing, so us as parents are able to make that decision.
All right. I think that's something that we would definitely be discussing, uh, when we meet as a board next weekend. And I'm sure we'll have a, at least one committee meeting in between now and that board meeting. And the administrators will lay that all out for us. Because that's a great question. Tim?
And then Marcia?
Marcia?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'll save, you know, the spring was not successful for both of my children. I have two in the district, one going into high school and one in middle school. And all of that talk I've heard about how great it was, not at all. I asked my eleven-year-old, while I'm sitting here on the phone, what did you learn during the COVID shutdown when you did virtual learning? He responded with nothing. He remembers nothing from the virtual learning. He remembers that he was overwhelmed with eighty-two, a hundred-plus kids in a Zoom, which made him not want to go back on it. He remembers that he watched a video for math and then I helped him with his math. None of that was positive for him. My other son, he'll tell you opposite. It was a hundred percent positive because he could wake up at four in the morning, get it all done on Monday and be done for the day or the week. And I used to hear so much talk about keeping the kids safe, which is so important. But there's so many kids who will not, under any circumstance, benefit from virtual learning. They won't. Yes, kids, kindergarten through, you know, elementary kids, they need that. But there are so many kids in middle school and high school that are at elementary levels that need their OT, their, their speech, their special education support in person, some one-on-one, some in small group. And that just cannot be done virtual. It, it, there's no way possible that I can see that will ever work. And I agree with the teacher who was just on, the chemicals in school, terrible. I will tell you, my child will be broken out in hives the entire time. And I'm going to be getting a phone call every day because he has hives. And every day because him fighting that, he will get a fever. My, the school knew this from the day one. My child had a fever all the time because he is susceptible to breaking out from everything. So is he not going to be able to go in because of these chemicals? We use all-natural everything. We have no option but that. So using hand sanitizer throughout the day isn't an option for us. Wearing a mask throughout the day, my kids haven't made it an hour yet without having an asthma attack or a panic attack. So, and then what do you say for those students who, if we're in-person learning, they can't wear a mask? We have to provide documentation? I feel like this shouldn't be something we should have to provide. If a student medically can't wear a mask, they shouldn't have to. And it shouldn't be questioned either because they have rights not to be questioned or to feel uncomfortable about it, going to school, being questioned. Because I can tell you, some kids will just shut down. If they're questioned on why they don't have a mask, they will shut down and not talk to anybody. And that's something that has to be taken into consideration the entire time. And I've heard no, besides safety, no talk about that part making it okay for kids because they're not going to be, most of them. So, that's it.
Thank you, thank you for those concerns and we'll take all those into consideration, obviously, and, uh, And I think, you know, I've heard a lot when we talk about last year, I think the, a lot of what people are saying, what was amazing about it is how quickly our teachers were able to adjust to that situation and give the best possible situation for our students for that semester. And now coming into this year, obviously, we know that it would have to be a better system than what we had. But that's what we'll be working on. So is there another? I see Amy Gayle with her hand up. There we go.
Hi, how are you all?
Good, how you doing?
Good, good. Okay. I'm choosing words very carefully. I understand that COVID is scary for a lot of people and that it's a real thing and that it's out there. I also see the kids, and I'm going to be clear, in the high school age, right? Really needing that social interaction, that in-class, the eye-to-eye contact with the teachers. And last spring, you know, they were able to knock out a week's worth of work in three hours. And I realize that you have a different system in place for the fall, which is beautiful. One of the beauties with COVID, and this is my point, one of the beauties with what is going on out there in the world is that we have options. If you're afraid of it or have respiratory or have type 1 diabetes, you have a choice. You can stay home or you can go to work. Let's give the kids a choice. Let's give the parents a choice. If you want to go to school, you may go to school. It seems to me you guys already have these tools in place and you're striving towards it. I always believe in the best of both worlds and options. And I just hope that if our governor does not pull us back in phase and Anchor Bay is allowed to give the students a choice and the parents a choice, let us make the decision, please. I have thank you and all stay well.
Well, thank you for those comments. Anybody else, Tim?
Nope.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, thank you to all the parents who spoke.
Yeah, and I think there's, I see one McKenzie.
Where?
McKenzie Streveler.
Oh, there she is.
Sorry, I just didn't want you to miss somebody.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Let me know. McKenzie, you're up.
Yeah, hello. So I have two concerns. My first question does relate to COVID in wondering how the special needs community will be supported if it's a totally online platform. Because obviously, they work better hands-on and/or need more help in the classroom. So that's just a concern. And I'm wondering if there's like a plan set in place for that. Secondly, I came to this meeting for one reason, one reason only, which is I'm here on behalf of Colleen Mellon and her employment at Anchor Bay. She has been and still is an amazing member of our community. She has done countless things for the community as a whole. The fact that she is having her integrity questioned is absolutely ridiculous and truthfully disgusting that has gone this far and come to this point. There is countless others that have had similar situations by the school board. And as a community, we do not stand for this anymore. It is also out of hand that the whole situation has seemed smoother over, almost as if nothing is happening. I have seen Colleen in the workplace and can attest to her being not only the best organized boss I have ever had, but also the most honest and hardworking. She devotes hours to the pool and community that surrounds it. Every person that walks in knows her, loves her and respects her. There's absolutely no reason to question her position. I know hundreds of others that would speak the same if her name was mentioned. I ask that her employment at Anchor Bay seriously be considered and understood that she is always going to be one of the best employees that Anchor Bay has ever seen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments. We have another parent that likes to talk, Ms. Nicole Delaime.
Hi. I just wanted to speak in support of the teachers and the staff. Parents are talking about them having the option to send their kids to school. Do teachers have the option not to go into school and still be paid? But pandemic's not under control. And to lose one staff member, to lose one teacher, it's not worth it. I think that they deserve a voice in this. And I know a lot of them feel very strongly about that it's not safe for them to go back. So I just wanted to speak as a parent and in support of them.
Yes, thank you for that. That is something that came up in all of our meetings as well as obviously the students, the teachers, the staff, everybody is, again, you lose a couple of teachers that, I mean, out being sick, that's another thing. And to put them, they don't have that choice. We choose to go back, they have to go back. So there's a lot of things to take into consideration when we make these decisions. Mr. Troy Currents? Currents?
Hello. Got a couple of different areas that I have questions on. First one is going to be with the students PPE. What is there going to be a standard that qualifies what is going to work as a mask? Is it face shields? Is it homemade masks? Is it store-bought masks? That is one of the questions. Or the scarfs that you're seeing a lot in workplaces. And on that part is how is this going to be enforced in the hallways and the classrooms? Who's going to be responsible for enforcing wearing of the masks? On the other subjects, as far as going virtual or online, is there going to be a sample that parents are going to be able to log in as a student and see what's going to be done, how the classes are going to be conducted? Is there going to be an interaction? The parents need an example of what their students are going to be experiencing if they choose the online course. A lot of parents want to make decisions as to how they're sending their kids in class or online or even to a completely different school district that has a game plan that's already been presented to their parents. And then the third line is, how is the Honor Academy going to work online for high school students?
All right.
John, I have one more. I got a message, Megan Blankhorn.
I looked, I don't see any hands.
She said she tried to message Mr. Sizemore.
Her name's Megan?
Megan Blankhorn.
Megan Blankhorn. Well, she can unmute herself. Megan, if you want to.
I got it now, thank you. So I have a question. I have, three of my kids are all six through 12. And if we start in-person, we'll have an exchange student as well. If we start virtual, he's not allowed to come. But my question is, is if we do start virtual, how will synchronous versus asynchronous learning work? My husband works in cybersecurity. And when he is working, he uses so much bandwidth. No one else in the house is able to get online. So will students be held accountable for not being able to be online during the day at certain points?
Ms. Bannick addressed that in her part section. I know it was long, but so I'll let Ms. Bannick go over that.
Yes, students are expected to be doing school virtually all day, similar to an in-class. There will be flexibility because classes can be recorded. However, you will be expected to attend the session. So if connectivity is an issue for you during the registration process, you will mark that box and we will work with you to get a hotspot.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry to put you on the spot, like, but I know that's something that we talked about was obviously the laptop being one issue. If we decide to go online, we have to make sure we provide you guys, provide all the parents every opportunity for those kids to be online and be successful and have that internet connection.
And one last quick question. Has there been a discussion about week in and week out, like an A group and a B group to lessen the number of students in the classroom and then sending home students with work for the following week?
These are all the discussions that, I mean, we could, these are all the what-ifs that are being talked about. Kind of like when we talked tonight when all the board members spoke. We agree with you. And it's a lot of hard decisions, a lot of decisions that obviously in a three-week timeframe, we need to make these decisions and get them out to the parents. But I would imagine it's going to be a long weekend for a lot of administrators and board members. And we'll try to, hopefully next week, have a more detailed plan that's going to be exactly what we're going to do. And we will be approved, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm searching. If any other board member got a message from somebody, I'm not seeing any other. I don't want to limit anybody that wants to talk, so.
I don't have anybody else anymore, so.
Deb Hunter has her hand up.
Who's that?
Debbie Hunter.
Hey. Deb, you're up.
Yes, I think no matter what we decide to do, that it might be nice to maybe not require, but make sure that parents know that it's very important to tune into maybe multiple Zoom meetings or open forum meetings with the parents, maybe with their child, depending on the grade level, to explain the exact expectations for parents and students. So they're not getting the information through an email or through paper expectations. And to let them know that if they do decide to go with an online education, that it will look completely different than last year. Last year was, you know, we were thrown into it. It was transitional. It was an effort to keep students engaged. It was not a full curriculum. And they need to be aware of that. Next year will look different in many ways. And have the opportunity, again, not through emails or paper, you know, hard copy letters going home. Just a suggestion.
No, it's a great suggestion. Obviously, next week's meeting will be the same thing and we'll put it out. You know, we can have as many people in these meetings as we need. And if we need to have multiple, once we decide which way we're going or what we're doing, we'll definitely be communicating with the parents the best way we can and as much as we can.
Right, thank you.
Yep. All right. That's it. So we'll close the open forum at this point. We're looking at going into closed session pursuant to the open meeting Zach section 8E to discuss legal opinion and 8A.
I have no clue how I did it.
To discuss labor negotiations. So is there a motion to convene into this closed session?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by? Moses, supported by Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Lisa, Ms. Berkmeyer, I mean, please call the rule.
Mr. Middlestaff?
Yes.
Mr. Duro?
Yes.
Ms. Akavati-Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. DeWitt?
Ms. DeWitt? She's muted right now. So she's gone.
Yes.
There we go.
There we are. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Berkmeyer, yes. Mr. Moses?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We're going to convene into closed session. So we'll be back in a little bit here.
So board members, you need to leave this meeting completely. Everybody else can stay. And then you join the other Zoom meeting.
Board members leave?
Board members leave because you have to go to executive session.
Okay, good.
There we go. Yes. All right. We need a motion to come back in closed session? Anybody? Oh, they're all muted.
They should go unmute themselves.
I'll, uh, I'll make motion, John. I'll second.
I'll support it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close. All right, coming out of closed session, there was no actions taken. So, um, I will alert the public to who's on this this meeting. We did schedule a meeting for next week, so you'll have ample time. We'll be meeting next Tuesday at 6:00 PM to resume discussions on a lot of the things that we were just talking about. Um, at this point, it's time for superintendent comments.
No, I thought tonight, uh, getting input from the parents and also from the board during the open session gives us much more information so we can look at different plans.
Can everybody hear? Everybody hear that? No, they can't hear.
I did.
Oh, there we go.
I don't know if I, anyways, no, very quickly, I thought tonight was a lot of good input with the public comments and stuff and with the board, the board collaborating. That's given us a lot of information. Come back next week. With a couple of different plans for the board to review.
Perfect, thank you. And we'll go into, uh, board comments. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Green, because you're at the top of my page.
Maybe three hours ago, but I've got nothing for you now.
Mr. Moses?
I'm good.
Mrs. Burkmire?
No.
Mrs. Henderson?
Too late. I'll reserve it to Tuesday.
Ms. DeWitt? Might have lost Ms. DeWitt.
She's on here, but she's here out.
She's what?
Muted. She's not like a host. She's on here, but she's far down the list and she's muted and stuff.
I know it's late.
There, she's on, she's unmuted.
All right, Marie, you have anything to say tonight for board? All right, I know Steve had to go. All I'll say is, uh, thanks to the board members for their work tonight and to the public for all their comments. Uh, the parents, you know, obviously they're taking into consideration, it's it's a lot of hard decisions. Board's going to do a lot of work, has been doing a lot of work, administration has, the teachers have. We're going to continue to and hopefully be able to have a lot more direction for everybody come next Tuesday. And, uh, we'll see you guys then.
Hey, good night.
We have to have an adjournment.
Right, that's.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Ms. Henderson, second by Mr. Moses. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, meeting stays adjourned until next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. It's a new time, so thank you.